We're at the meeting at seven oh eight. Now they call the order if you would also.
All right, wait.
I mean, we're. Can you get?
Pass this time. You got a sign. Mr. Chair, do you like to wag now? Hey.
You all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
But I say so. We're going to choose the Republic, which stands one nation. And just as well. Just as smart. Thank you all. Dr. Will.
Yes, of course. So tonight we have a really, really big treat. We get to acknowledge the parent educator and the teacher of the year or in the audience tonight. So I am going to acknowledge and read a read acknowledgement of each of them. And maybe that each can introduce the person that came with them. We got to honor them. And and I do have a little something for them as well. And so after I do my my bit, if you also wanted to ask questions against an article, it's not fantastic. So what I'd like to do is start with Ms. McClarty. Ms. McClarty, just want to wave, let everybody know. She is amazing. She's worked for the district for 12 years and I know Ms. McClarty really well. She is a leader among her colleagues. She always has been, and she helps make everything work in this district with respect to parent educators and about every other way. She's one of the people that pitches in to just make make sure it all goes smoothly. She has many, many roles. She is the president of the CSEA. She also is a legislative action committee representative. She's been a delegate to the CSEA Executive Council. CSEA is the bargaining unit for the parent educators. She's an active participant in every community workshop that we have. She is the teacher liaison or rather she is parent educator liaison between, you know, her staff and administration. And she meets with me a number of times a year to help us make sure we're doing the best we can for kids. And she also meets with building administration to do the same thing. She's actively involved in all kinds of school functions. In fact, back during the pandemic, she was one of the most helpful people helping us navigate it. She immediately joined the Rock Committee, which was the ROCC. We had, you know, all my acronyms are cool. But it was it was the reopening operations and curriculum committee, and she jumped right in. She was really excited at that time.
To be on the parent one end.
She helped us navigate those very tumultuous waters. And she also jumps right in on all kinds of committees. Like she's also on the social emotional learning committee, the Yale ruler committee, which helps guide our social emotional programming, as well as what's called positive behaviors and intervention supports committee. So she really helps guide the district and lead the district, helps with kids in a variety of ways. It helps us know how to best serve kids through her leadership on those committees. She's been a team player forever. She's amazing and always supports kids. She teaches a number of programs in this district. She's most responsible right now for helping our kids learn keyboarding in K one, two. So it's an extremely important skill because they have to be able to take the standardized assessments and take S back and N W E A, which are these standard assessments they have to take, as well as they have to learn how to type. So teaching a K one, two or to type is, you know, it's it is not an easy task and she does it extremely well. She also has become a software expert, among other things, creating numerous visuals for us and helping provide with help the teachers provide excellent lessons and provide instructional technical support there, too. She also connects with a group of students every day to help start their day off on the right foot. She makes she's one of the people we can count on to make sure some of the kids that are having the hardest time get the most compassionate love and it always helps get them through the day. And, you know, she's always got an extremely positive way of helping the kids do their very best. So at this point, I would just like to stand. Get a gentle part of that. Can you do me a favor is take a picture of me shaking the gentleman's hand?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Do you want to introduce your?
Oh, this is my husband, Tim. I dragged him here this evening.
And also this evening for our acknowledgements is Miss Benashevsky. She is the teacher of the year and I just recently we came from the teacher of the year ceremony where she was up there with our commissioner of education, Charlene Russell Tucker, and got some pictures with her. She is one of the most amazing educators I've ever met. She has taught special education for grades preschool through grade two. Spends most of her time right now at PGP and is always eagerly working to find the best ways to help kids and educate kids. She is a leader. You know, on a teacher's side, she does an amazing job with multi sensory education, providing rigorous ed for kids that are challenged in a variety of different ways. She uses all kinds of technology that a lot of people really have a hard time wrapping their head around. From assistive devices to certain kind of communications books and iPads and phone books. And no matter what she is faced with, she's able to make use of it and do an amazing job with many hands on lessons. You know, and that's really important for kids, especially at that age, to be able to engage and be hands on, not feel intimidated. And she has this beautiful gift of helping the kids not feel intimidated when facing things that sometimes might be, you know, kind of hard for them. She is an amazing collaborator and leader. She has been leading a special education team for years now and continues to set very high standards for them. In fact, her leadership has helped us, you know, move and evolve our own teaching with these groups. She does all kinds of data review with them. You know, directs and manages placement meetings. And there's a thing called CT sets right now, which is generally a nightmare for everyone, but she helps us manage to get through it. It's a state of Connecticut solution to our PPT problems, but that solution often needs solutions of its own. And she helps us get through all of it. She's known to be an invaluable member of our our teams. And she is also someone that, you know, we can always count on. She all tends to go in every direction and dedicates herself to organizations outside of the the standard contractual school day. You know, she works with our FRCs and our PTOs. And this is something that, you know, people don't have to do. She engages, you know, both in the school day and out of the school day. I've never I've never met anyone really as special as Megan. She's she's amazing. We have a lot of amazing teachers, but she seems to have a special gift for being able to help the kids and lead people. She has all kinds of all kinds of skill sets all wrapped up in in who she is. And you don't see that very often. So just I wanted to give a thanks and also acknowledge her teacher of the year, Megan Benashinsky.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce your?
This is my dad, also he writes him along to all.
What if anything you wanted to?
Yeah, let me go ahead and start. I just want to, you know, thank both regardless, you know, even if I hadn't heard all the wonderful things Dr. Will had said about you both. You are absolutely amazing and wonderful people. As the parent of a second grader, you know, every day when she gets off that bus and can't wait to show me what she learned today. You know, it's not just, how was your day? Okay, it was Papa, look at what I can do now. Look at what I can I've learned and let me teach you this. That passion, that excitement comes from you. And that, you know, I can't thank you enough for what you've done for her, for what you're doing for talented for the world. Thank you. You good?
Yeah. I go Tony, thank you so much to both of you. Mrs. Benashevsky, certainly, you know, working with not the easiest age group. And I'm sure that you bring them so much enrichment and joy every day. Thank you so much for that. Mrs. McClarty, I have the joy, no, my your professionalism and and how articulate you are in our negotiation meetings. It just says everything that there is to know about you. And I got to see Ms. McClarty in action last week when I was working the book fair with her kindergarteners as she was, or should we use corralling them in an empty book fair and in keyboarding.
And it's only a preview day. No money change.
But again, you know, seeing you in action and you're so caring and wonderful with the kids. So thank you so much to both of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now, one of the other gifts we give you is you don't have to stay. Feel like you have to stay. But we, you know, thank you for coming because really wanted to know that you've been all the awesome.
Thank you.
Great to say.
Hi.
Hi.
We can say hi.
Good night.
All right. Moving on, do we have any changes to the agenda? Then I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for November twenty ninth. So. Second. All right. Any discussion? There are none. We do have somebody online. I will go with the rule call.
Is that me?
Nope, nope. Dana?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
I'm an I. Bill?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Jay?
Hi.
Ray?
Hi.
Minutes are approved. Dr. Will, are you ready with your timer? All right. We will now move on to public participation. Members of the town board of education welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments during points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting center. So for, well, there's nobody in the room, but online, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and you'll be recognized. All right. Say none. We will go ahead and close public participation for funds. Bill?
Nothing came in for all of us.
Okay. Thank you. Points of information. Anybody like to to speak? All right, student representative.
All right. Hi, guys. So it's just me today. But we actually only have four things, so it's pretty lucky. Number one, there is an NHS fundraiser for who got to pay a teacher. The teacher with the most money donated in their name. It gets to be pied live over the morning announcements. Those are all on YouTube if you want to see it in action. And Mr. Poland won. So in the coming weeks, Mr. Poland will be pied by a student on the morning announcements. There is a deck of practice competition tomorrow. On Thursday, forty eight people are competing. Jaden, I think you're judging. Um, so that's pretty exciting. PJJ was on the eighth. We raised over nine hundred dollars for CCFC. So thank you to everyone who donated. And finally, although not directly school affiliated, talent high school students on the mock trial team have a competition on the twentieth. Any questions, comments, or insights? Yeah.
How does the student get picked that gets to pie?
That's a very good question. So you put your name on a slip and you put it into a little box, then your name gets drawn. Yeah. So.
We're going to get a picture of this pie, Mr. Poland.
It's on YouTube. It is on YouTube. All right. Unfortunately, because it is the holiday season, every class and club I have decided to have something really big going on this week. So I do need to leave. But yep. Um, but I hope you all have a great meeting and everybody. Thank you. Chairs. Maybe get any shirts.
We are starting budgets.
All right, and Dr. Will, if you'd like to move on to I want.
All right, so I want is the first tonight of our BOE goal setting. And as you recall, that during the pre period leading up to this, there was an opportunity for board members to submit some of their draft thoughts and ideas. Tonight, we're adding to that list, provided you have anything that you want to brainstorm and add to it. But before we do that, just a quick overview. And the information that we are about to talk about was up on the dashboard and sent to the board members. So I I'm just going to kind of do a helicopter view of it rather than a deep dive because I feel you probably have already seen this, so I won't go into it in too much depth. But one of the resources that was available for the board was the, you know, the overview document. And the overview document had it in as a resource. You know, the board of education goals that existed prior, there was three. The past goals going back to, say, oh, six through now. And there were some that were, you know, that they were listed there that were fairly recent, all the way back to some of the ones going back maybe twenty years, ten, ten, twenty years. And then what I also did was I put this on the other document, too. There are some recommendations of the jet, the kind of what a board goal will look like. So this is copied out of cave. So the one district level board goal as an example would be to ensure that every student enters school ready to learn. So cave talks about, you know, as the policy setting kind of group, you you're usually the high, you know, the helicopter sort of side of things. You're doing the broad things and then everybody kind of swings up under those broad categories that you set. You know, whether it's facilities as a focus for a year or fresh levels focused for a year or, you know, making sure that all kids start ready to learn. What that translates into on an operational point of view is something like a childhood education program. So if we're making sure all kids come to school ready to learn at the admin level, we're focusing energies on child education programs. And so some of the things these days that were challenged by COVID are things like chronic absenteeism. You know, truancy, things like that, because people coming out of COVID, there's just a lot of adjusting going on. And so we're working hard to try to adjust and make make efforts and programming to help kids and help families help bring the kids and get them into school because that could greatly affect their their success. So another kind of goal that might be in the, you know, high end of the helicopter umbrella kind of goal would be something with respect to, you know, making sure that all kids are coming to school, you know, regularly and and that they are, you know, their needs are served and met, et cetera. It's a broad goal. And then underneath that, we create attendance insurance programming and things like that and budget resources things point to it. So that's just a general example. These two are from cave as sort of a, you know, board goal and then something that might come under it. I also wanted to point out that the state of Connecticut required administration to set their goals under four categories. That's a part of the flexibilities piece that's been in existence now for a couple of years. And the board each time it was presented, accepted the the flexibilities plan of the state of Connecticut. So all admin had to, all admin and teachers frankly, had to submit their goals under one of those four categories. Supporting the health, safety and social emotional well being of staff and students. Ensuring equity is the most vulnerable students and their families. Mastery based learning, system master level of content and developing systemic approaches to incorporating social and emotional practices and or culturally responsive practices into the teaching and learning process. So whenever a goal was set that it had to be in one of those master categories. And then you could create, you know, the indicators of success off of those. And then you can make data targets, things like that. So I just wanted to point out some of those things for your own information purposes about kind of where we are and how flexibility fits into things, what the state of Connecticut's requirements were, what some examples from cave were and so on. Additionally, we have worked now for probably seven years, maybe even a decade on portrait of a graduate. Portrait of a graduate is our mission, vision and beliefs. And it's essentially in a short version, it's what we want to see kids have for skills and dispositions when they graduate. And so this was actually worked on by prior boards at part of a collaborative effort with the community, the teachers and other staff. And ultimately came up with the portrait of a graduate that you see here, mission, vision, dispositions, skills and dispositions. Skills are up here in squares, dispositions are those little arrows. And then what comes off of that are what's called transfer goals. So transfer goals are when you're writing curriculum, you say, okay, you know, this, these parts of our math curriculum or, you know, for a certain program like bridges. For this lesson, it's going to have critical and creative thinking, effective, independent collaborative work, you know, innovative problem solving. They take from the master set of goals and they incorporate it into their lesson and curriculum program. So these are aligned in all kinds of ways. And the rubrics that they use to assess the kids for their behavior and their academics are aligned to the portrait of a graduate. So it goes deep into all kinds of things that we do. So that's just a kind of quick flyover of what's in that document. Then this was included as an example of pre pandemic goals, school improvement goals that typically a teacher or an administrator would set. So there's, you know, an overall kind of arching goal. And then there's the kinds of things that would help make, you know, make target or what's called an indicator of success. They're also called by the state of Connecticut EGADs, which is, you know, growth and development indicators, assessments of growth and development. So, you know, you have on the right hand side there kind of samples of what somebody might be writing on a teacher level or on an admin level to align to the overall risk. So I wanted you to see kind of everything under the umbrella. You know, you set the goals at the high end of the umbrella that we kind of all nest ourselves under and work towards. The state of Connecticut has a stake in that, as you noticed, they can say some things, too. And then at the school level, you know, it looks very much like these targets when it comes down to different populations of kids and the targets that we set for them as teachers, as administrators. So that's the basic flyover of the goals information doc. And then there's a link to the state of Connecticut's flexibility, if you wanted it. So where we ended up landing or where you ended up landing this evening was you did set. If some did contribute to these, I might have to stop this sharing just for a minute so I can get under this and put here and blow it up for the board. So people at home, we can we we can share this, but to board members, this is actually available to you, sent out today. It's on the dashboard, so you don't have to look up here to get it. You could actually open it on your computers and, you know, view it. These were the goals submitted so far by the board of education. One of the members said that they also thought that the current goals were good. So you may notice that there are actually the first three are are the current goals, I believe, because there was a desire to, you know, say that those were pretty good, too. So those are just included. You'll notice that no one's names are on these because ultimately what you're going to do after today. Today, we're just looking at these, starting to formulate more that you might want to share. But after today, you know, we're going to get into a goal ranking activity where you take these, we put them out there and we start to rank them. But before we do that, you do have some time where you're going to be able to, you know, add and we'll be able to synthesize these. So so before you're doing any major ranking, we're synthesizing. So we're adding more of these goals tonight if you want to. And then what we do in the December twentieth meeting is we start to look at where you, which ones you felt were most important. So after tonight, I'm going to put them into a sheet that I send you that allows you to actually give them a five, one to five. Five is the highest you could possibly give it. One is, you know, you like the effort, but you didn't really think it was something that you wanted to see move forward. And then when I come back to you after the eighteenth, I have your rankings there and you can start narrowing down and combining them. You know, ultimately, you're going to have three to five goals typically. So tonight is just taking a look at the ones you've already submitted. Maybe throwing out some additional ones if you want, and then ultimately, starting tomorrow through the eighteenth, we rank. Does anybody have any questions or any thoughts? All right, so, you know, this can go any which way you want. I will not read these as I assume you've you've looked at them so far and you're able to kind of look. So what I tried to do, too, is create an area of focus, not strictly a category, but what was the goal generally covering? Because when you're going to, if you're going to have three goals or five goals, you might want to have a fiscal goal and a facilities goal and a, you know, culture or, you know, social emotional kind of goal. And so you may want to have three to five goals of varying categories, which allows us to nest a lot of stuff under those. If you don't have, for instance, a facilities goal, it's not like the facilities fall through the bottom of, you know, the toilet or anything here. But but that's all, that's not going to be something then that we're writing goals against. You know, we're just going to be making sure we have high quality facilities. But it's not going to be saying when I'm working for you for the year, if you don't put facilities on there, I'm not going to let the buildings go to, you know, go to heck. But it's not going to be, say, the number one focus of my attention. But we'll, you know, nothing will go terribly wrong, but they just won't be the number one focus of my attention because it wasn't the worst, right? So there's a couple of fiscal ones. There's academic tied to fiscal, there's professional development, there's communication and board process, co curricular program support. For those who don't know what the strategic prevention framework is, it's really about abuse prevention services for a community. You know, if let's say that was the focus, I might provide our service survey again this year, substance abuse risk behavior assessment. If I knew that's what the board wanted to focus on, I would give that to all the kids again. It's one that we designed. We have to do that eventually anyway, but I would make sure that happened this year, which was the board's interest, for instance. You know, culture and climate, you know, has to do with programming and say co curricular activities. When you say extracurricular, sometimes people say extracurricular, the wording typically used in the field these days is co curricular. Because say a engineering or robotics club or activity will go along with our STEM and STEAM math stuff. So that's why it's considered co curricular because it's an extension of the curriculum. If you want to test out your, you know, mechanics and engineering from a class you took, you're going to that club and you have opportunity to say Lego robotics or Rage Robotics or something that gets your hands into it. You know, so you do the, you know, do the math on paper on a Chromebook in the in the class. And then after school, there's that extension. So sometimes people call that extracurricular, but typically it's also known as co curricular, working in with the curriculum. And then instructional technology, you know, there was continuing to support the one to one initiative. You know, and all of these do have, you know, if that's the area of focus, you know, obviously we'd make sure that that doesn't get discarded no matter what. There's cost that as you'll see as budget comes along. Again, social emotional learning, communication, academics, equity, justice and fairness. And then another fiscal responsibility. So the fiscal ones generally tend to be the same, not the same in exact words, but they're all almost always around transparency, responsibility, providing excellence while sustaining a budget that can be passed a referendum, you know, or that is fair and, you know, fair to the community. So at this point, now I am simply your scribe. Now I write what you want me to write as any additional goals. And then, you know, I help us combine that once you start ranking the ones that are most.
Thank you, Dr. Will. I think the important thing to keep in mind here, the purpose of today is not to eliminate, not to cut any out, but to brainstorm. You know, to put these things out there that we may have been thinking about. They may be on there already, but we'll sort that out in a way to make sure that when we go into the actual selection and ranking, what we feel is, what we feel is important has been captured. So that being said, I'll open it up. If you'd like to say.
I'll start. You had mentioned, you know, having something on about facilities. I think, you know, coming from that type of background, you know, there there's not too much more that will cost money to the budget if we're not really, really conscious of making sure our facilities is is kept up to date before problems occur. So I think, you know, having something on there about facilities, about our property, about our assets, our physical assets of the buildings is important to have. How to word it? Just thinking off the top of my head right now.
All topics are beta, or when I hear you talk, I start typing. Just started with maintain facilities and school properties.
Yeah, whether, I mean, I'm sure there's already a preventative management program in place, you know, keeping, keeping ahead of the, you know, the rooftop units, the roofs. You know, all the all the stuff that can really cost us a lot of money that might not be planned for in the budget. You know, all the, all the stuff that can really cost us a lot of money that might not be planned for in the budget.
Can I piggyback a question off of this? So the other day, Walt, you had sent something out regarding this capital budget request for 2024 to 2029. What is the average, say, the last five years of what you're spending per budget, like percent of the total budget on these facility items? Whether it's computer upgrade or epoxy up the floor or a big track or whatever.
So that's a, thank you, that's a great question. Generally what happens is your operating budget is not supposed to sustain capital investments in facilities. So anything that's $10,000 or more, typically we then ask of the town through our capital budget requests. So that's where, when you start going through all the stuff that I, and I know I threw it all out at you, so.
Yeah, yeah, I clipped out a bunch of them.
But that capital, everything on that capital budget request is the big stuff. Like you mentioned the track, that's 300,000.
Yeah, 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 lunch tables, 48 grand.
And if it were, if it were in your regular budget, you know, out of a 40 million, 100,000, you know, you're in the present zone. But it's, it's, it, together, those things are extremely expensive and they have to be bonded for. So that the board cannot take debt. It can't issue or, you know, it can't take on loans. It has to just buy what it buys out of its 10, 222. And it's, it's designed to expend your budget every year. You're supposed to be allocated a budget that you expend every year. You're allowed to carry over 1% right now by ordinance 86, you could go up to 2% if the town agreed. But most of the time, that's the only place you can actually buy big capital items is out of this fund called the ERF that you can carry over a little bit of. Otherwise, most of the big things you were mentioning are things we request in our capital budget of the town.
And where is the, the ERF information on that?
So the educational reserve fund is, is a whole coffee conversation and we'll get into an FFC probably.
Yeah.
But if you go into the board dashboard and you click on the FFC folder, some of the meetings we covered at ERF. It's, it's under ordinance, chapter eight, ordinance 86 of the charter. And basically it allows the board to transfer up to 1% of its funds at the end of the year, if there's funds remaining. To the educational reserve fund for use later for capital projects, special ed or for technology. And this year you, you're offsetting technology to the tune of a couple hundred thousand, using that fund, which helps you have a lower budget this year. But then, you know, that comes to roost the next year because it's a borrowed fund.
I could send you some more.
Yeah, the only, the other thing was, because some of them I saw as some medium or high priority and some of them were still even if those hives pushed back a few years. Some of them were like upgrades to a computer lab, a Bergstrove or whatever. I just was wondering where some of the, these, if students are falling behind or not getting the optimal learning experience due to. You know, a fraction of budget that some does not be an upgrade or whether it's an old program or something like that, I think.
We'll definitely need to dig into. Both within FFC and then here over the next couple of months as that capital budget not only comes here to talk, but starts to really get moved around in the town. So we'll make sure that's better.
Taking a look at the budget calendar I posted up there because it has the dates plus it does have the capital budget hearing, which is something that is over in.
Then we have a sidetrack and just, just piggyback and then.
Was it?
Thought you had mine there, huh?
So I wanted to know, make sure that it gets addressed and shows up. So we'll send you those links.
Alright, thanks.
Obviously we're going to have the FFC as well. Okay.
Um, just going off and just running some wording to what Bill said. How about something like ensure students and staff a safe and comfortable learning environment by proper maintenance of school facilities and properties?
Say that one again, I'm sorry.
Ensure students and staff a safe and comfortable learning environment by proper maintenance of school facilities and properties. I'm not sure about comfortable, but.
A comfortable learning environment.
Safe, intent, safe, Susan.
Comfortable, comfortable. I know we should have required.
Safe learning environments.
I was trying to weave the facilities piece into affecting the people in the schools.
We got that far.
Oh, sorry. Ensure students and staff a safe and.
Yeah, not Lisa.
Lisa should be doing it. Ensure students and staff a safe and comfortable learning environment by proper maintenance of school facilities and properties. I'm not married, yeah, I'm not married to those words, I was just.
One more time.
Your whole fact.
Ensure students and staff a safe and comfortable learning environment by proper maintenance of school facilities.
Uh, school facilities.
And properties.
You sitting waiting for us?
Other ideas?
I did, by the way, I did put the capital one up if you want, I, I will advocate for capital budget items, board, you know.
Thanks, definitely something I want to learn more about, but and for whether it's not, whether or not it's even up a purview of the board. As very new member and I'm sorry, but as far as academics go, I love the kind of the, the portrait of what a good student is going to be looking like. But as far as what can we do to come up with kind of like a portrait of what we think a solid educator is? I understand how teachers are ranked, scored, incentivized to become teacher of the year, like who we just saw. Like, I don't know if that is something that we have any control over, but it'd be great to get.
Support for personal development.
Exactly, it's like, how are we doing better in that regard? It's been 10 years, we've been talking about what a good picture of a student is, but it starts with teachers.
That's correct.
I don't do that, or if we're alive.
And that's exactly what, that's exactly what this goal setting is to do, is to say, you know what? If, to your point, if identifying and strengthening, you know, what that, that, that perfect educator is, is one of our goals. Then we look to Dr. Will to start working on the professional development, to start looking at some of those questions out there, that, that what kind of education they need? What kind of tools do they need? What kind of facilities do they need? All of that goes into how they teach and how they educate better, so that's a great.
And then what comes under that is we will, you as a board will have the opportunity to make a decision about the calendars and things like that. How many professional development days there are early release days. So you may decide to increase.
These days, a lot of people don't enjoy it. But it is, but it's, it's very fruitful and it, and it was quite a, a great tool during COVID specifically, working on the technology and the dual teaching and such. It was, if you don't mind me tacking onto something. Teachers and TPS staff or TPS, because they all have their development parent educators and so on and so forth. I think that would be important to attach with this goal, that, that same line.
Okay, support the person.
And it's their staff.
Staff, okay, absolutely. And any tweaks anyone wants, just let me know.
I'm not sure what the wording for it would be, but just a few weeks ago, I went back and revisited the unfunded mandates conversations. I, I guess what I would put in quotes here, finding a balance. Being able to maintain our schools, being able to maintain our schools while at the same time. Dealing with unfunded mandates. I don't know what the proper. Something along those lines, it's, it's going to come up, it, it probably already has come up. But something follows, I'm not sure what it is. Hello, Ken? Oh, yes. Class, they're still working, tell me that. I've actually got one. I've actually got one as well. Promoting data-driven decision-making and prioritization efforts. And we talk a lot about student achievement and all the data that's on the, the portal there. And so how do we use that to influence a lot of the other conversations that we have in here? And how we really start bringing this back around to the student focus. Great story. They're all great ideas, thank you.
Any, anything to add?
No, I think you guys are, got a lot of good ideas.
The sound.
It comes from the owl.
But that's where her name.
I mean.
Yeah, we heard.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, we give another chance then. Anybody else have thoughts and want to add to the board?
That's a great start.
That's a great start.
I think a lot of stuff falls under, a lot of this stuff, 20, 31s we have down so far.
And then that's the key, I don't want to stay high enough that they can, they, sorry, that the administration can then fill underneath. We don't want to get into the weeds, you know, buy three more chairs for this classroom that, that steps outside what we need to do. And I agree, Bill, I think a great set, you know, I'm here to start looking at it. Dr. Will, just for review then, what happens now?
Good, so at this point, what will happen is tomorrow, or probably tomorrow, I'm going to send you a communication also to the dashboard. All of these goals are going to be put on a ranking form. And you will have the opportunity then in your own time, in the span of the next week to, you know, take a look at them, read through them again. This document's available to you as well. And next to each one of these will be the ability to rank it as a five high or one low. You'll do that over the span of the next few days. When we come back on December 20th, I'll report back to you which ones were the highest ranked and I'll group them. And then you can start wordsmithing because some of these, for instance, fiscal ones, you might have three highest ranked fiscal ones. And you may decide to merge those three language into one. Similar for culture, climate, you might have some that, you know, for academics, there'll be three or four. And each of the two or three highest ones, you may merge those into one. So ultimately in every category, you'll probably merge one or two of the highest ranked ones into one, and that's how you end up getting your three or four. Then after that, the final activity is going and taking every goal and looking at how we're going to promote that goal to the community. What do you expect for accountability for this goal? You know, and then variety of things based on, you know, step five, basically in the goal planning document that I sent you. So, you know, you'll notice there's one, two, three, four, five, you're now heading into step three. And we're going to end at step five, which is on the January 20th and thereabouts. You'll be really taking a look at what it means to, you know, to get community support for these goals and what you want, you know, what you, what you want me to be looking into for accountability for each of these goals, that kind of thing.
Thank you, Dr. Will.
And that agenda item summarizes it too, if you take a look at it. It summarizes each date's purpose, setting that, you know, what are our expectations for the goal? What are the conditions for success to the goal? What is our systemic accountability for this? You know, what are the outcomes? Do we want to come out of this? And how are we going to get the public to support each of these goals?
And that's why this, this next meeting, not that this was important, this was, was pretty important. But this next one is where we really come together and mold them. You know, because when we come out at the end there in January 10th, we need to have a set of three to five goals that we can all get behind. While we may have different ideas on how we do it, we all agree that this is what we need to do. So bring your concerns, bring your accolades, we're here to talk the war.
And if you are able to do that, that homework piece from the 14th to the 18th, I can give you your highest ranked ones.
Moving on to I two then, the always exciting monthly financial.
That's right, so for those new, at the first meeting of every month, we do a monthly. Okay, so at the beginning of every month, we do a monthly financial report. This monthly financial report goes over the, the basics and we provide a one pager. And what I'll generally do with the one pager is I'll give you kind of a quick summary and then with the one pager, you know, there's a narrative. And I will kind of give you a flyover of each of the budget areas, whether they're over or under budget. And why they are at that, you know, station or position right now. So we are about, as we get into this point in the year, there's a budget balance of $20,201. That's about 0.05% of the budget. Most of the budget is encumbered, we did go into a budget freeze because we faced a couple of challenges this year and we're continuing to work through them. You know, one of the challenges is we have special education expenditures that have gone beyond what were originally budgeted. That does happen sometimes when you have things happen in special education, you need a transport. Every outplacement, the average outplacement is about 90,000. We also have a transportation contract from a single bidder that, you know, you budget for that as best you can in January, February. That contract and bidding got finalized in that period of the summer, June, July. And so that was, that was high, so we had. High, but they did work with us, you know, because they knew we were going to have a challenging budget, even though they worked with us, it was still high. So we ended up having to take an impact on that as well. So this budget year is going to be, you know, touchy as it go along because you will see that budget balance probably go negative starting January or February. And then we get what's called an excess cost payment, which is money that comes to us from the state of Connecticut for our special ed. It'll pop above or rise up again, then we'll probably dip down again in March. Then we get the second excess cost payment in May. So we get, we get funds from the state and some from the feds, but mostly from the state to offset our special education costs. And that, that doesn't come in until February and May. So we're 20,000 above water now, you'll see us dip below. That doesn't mean that, you know, we're actually owing anything, it just means that, you know, our positive lines, you know. Some of the stuff we haven't collected yet from the state is encumbered and things like that. So, you know, that'll come in in February and May and balance out a bit. But we are going to be very, very tight this year. And that's why we have a budget freeze because of these, these higher costs. So that's why we're at 20, 20,000 right now, 0.05%. You can expect that to dip a little bit down as we go. Going from code to code here, salaries code 110 is currently under budget. This will go down as the district continues to bring on those staff. That, there's still a series of staff that because of where we were, mostly pairs, mostly special ed pairs. We, we haven't fully hired them, there's about eight still that are outstanding. And occasionally we have one or two teachers depending, kind of fluctuating in and out. The new contract will take care of that because one of the things that the new contract does, it helps us retain our teachers when we first hire them. Because we, we took out steps three and four, so we start them at step five, which means we start them at a more competitive wage. But what we've had happen to us recently is teachers will get hired and we train them and then they can be paid more at Rocky Hill. For instance, we had one leave three weeks ago for $15,000 more at Rocky Hill. So the new contract will help us not have that happen, but that has caused some fluctuations. So in any case, because of those fluctuations.
What, because of those. What step was that teacher at? Were they in one of the steps that we?
They're in one of the, the earlier steps and that's kind of where we are too. We, we, we tend to lose the newer ones because they, they were the ones that could be, you know, be snapped up by places for some four months. But we should be, you know, thanks to our chair there in negotiations, we were able to get, you know, you know, really equitable, fair deal. And by the way, below the median and below the mean for the state. So it was well, well negotiated, went into mediation, but still will get us to a better position on retaining our staff. So there's some money that are, that's left in there and that'll go down as the year goes on. But we do need it because it's going to offset some of the other areas that are actually over budget. Our substitute code 120 is under budget by 102,000. That's going to continue to be expended, so, you know, I use the word under budget, but it just means that's kind of what's in there right now. We're going to be burning through that as we get through the rest of the year and keep, you know, bringing in subs and long-term something, things like that. Because there's illnesses, for instance, rising in the last two weeks, we have 23 absences, one in one of our days. And then it was followed by another 30 because people are getting sick a lot now, so we have subs coming. Stipends, stipends are over budget by 24,000. Currently what happens with something like that is department liaisons, great leaders, athletic coaches. Curriculum is included in stat category, it's over budget for a couple of reasons. We have not collected all the revenues in this category yet because people pay into the student activity accounts. And part of what gets paid for out of stipends is your advisors for these things. They get their payment at the beginning when they contract as the advisor, but all, not all the money gets collected or even put in right away. They have through November, December, some families, you know, we have to work with them. So when those stipend payments come in, that budget will rise. So when those stipend payments come in, that budget will rise and that number will get a little less negative. But we do tend to never fully able to, you know, collect it all. So that does sometimes remain negative through, through our budget cycle on these one pagers. Because, you know, we're not always collecting it all. It can also be affected by. If we have a long season in sports or there's a change in coaching, a more experienced coach or a coach ends up lapsing over into their fifth year halfway through the year. They get a higher pay scale. And so sometimes, you know, we make an estimate, but sometimes a person might transition and get paid a little more within a span of a year. And, you know, that can also cause the stipend line to go a little negative. So it's not a high negative number in proportion to the entire budget and it does fluctuate and we will collect the funds against it. But sometimes that line will stay somewhat negative and it's balanced by other lines. Health, life and disability assurances with insurance, which is code 210 is over. The vacancies continue to affect this. What happens when we have vacancies is those people aren't paying into health insurance. So when they're not paying in, there's a certain amount budgeted that we expect to receive from people paying into the health insurance program. When they're not paying in, it can sometimes cause a over budget amount. And again, on a 40, say million dollar budget, 33 is not much, thousands not much. I'm not saying it's not a lot of money. But that's generally caused by some of those vacancies not paying in. And so, you know, that, that tends to fluctuate a bit month to month as those get filled and people are paying in. You know, we do work with the insurance companies to see if they'll let us adjust the contributions based on membership, but we are self insured. So we'll usually pledge a certain amount and contribute to the program every year and we give that same exact amount every month. So I know we, we, we can see if we can adjust that.
You don't get a debit and credit that when like teachers are leaving or what?
No, we, we, we do a basic overall estimate and then we're self insured. And self insured is actually really good for us, which we could do a whole presentation on an FFC. Most of the industry out there right now, the insurance rates are increasing by 13 to 17%. We're looking at a much lower increase for, because we are self insured. And so there's a whole lot to talk about there. But that's been, that actually was Steve Wobner's genius when he was here a long time ago. We have great Manhattan engine now, but Steve. Anyway, so, so that's how that works. BICA 220 is under budget by 64,000. They were encumbered in September, vacancies in overtime. You know, are helping that keep a little higher. ICMA is our retirement program for non certs. It's over by 48. This account is going to get a credit of 60,000 over the next two to three months from the forfeiture account. And the forfeiture account is people who left, are left prior to five years. And so if they leave prior to five years, they forfeit money that was set aside for them for ICMA retirement. So that there's going to be 60,000 coming back into this line and it'll push it back above. So that's going to get adjusted. Professional tech services is under by 28. This will go down as we continue to pay for those services. Professional ed services 320 is under by 32. This will go down as the district continues to uncover and spend. Professional tech may go slightly over. I think one of them here is negative to 993. That's because we had to hire some, you know, within the first five months of the year, there was some hiring. Background checks had to be run because of all the hiring and there was more background checks than we expected to have to do. Legal consultation services, because we were in bargaining unit negotiations and it pushed over in summer. We had some additional costs for the bargaining unit negotiations, teacher contracts. So those legal services are a bit high or a little bit over by 6,000. Tech 350 is slightly over by 1,000. You know, we generally balance that out. We don't do transfers. This is something to talk about later in FFC too. So things run over negative and they're balanced by other lines that are left positive. So there's facilities line left positive for, you know, roughly the same amount.
What is the fiscal year?
Fiscal year runs from June 1st through, sorry, it's June, it's July 1st through the end of June. July 1st through June 30th, July 1st through June 30th. Cleaning rubbish is under by 40. I'm going to just go fast here. Repair and maintenance is under by 132 because we haven't incurred everything. Transportation is over budget by $378,000. This has to do with a couple of factors. We, we have to provide transportation for homeless students in a homeless condition. So there's a McKinney Vento Act and we have some families who are homeless and now they're in other places homeless. So we have to provide transportation for those families and that has an additional cost to us. We also have that higher transportation contract that's affecting us and we have some special education transportation that was recently added that also pushed that budget high. So that's 378 over and we're making adjustments. It's one of the reasons we're in a freeze. Advertising is a little over because we've had to advertise more. Tuition is over because there are more students with special needs. And so we're needing to provide, you know, tuition and outplacement for so many students who come in with special needs. An example is a student might not age out. They changed the law to have certain children stay in school longer. Because they changed that law, some students stay even later into their 22nd year. And so they changed that mid-budget cycle and now we, we have to incur costs for that. So that's an example of that is that's about 190,000 alone. So when you see something like 352, 190,000 of it can be one person. General supplies is a little over. It's just not, sorry, general supplies is slightly over. And you know, that'll balance out as the year goes along here a bit. Because that's balanced out by some of the other facilities lines. So custodial supplies went slightly over. I'm just trying to speed up a little here. Instructional supplies is under. Energy, we transfer all of our energy money over at the beginning of the year to the utility intern service fund. So all the entire energy budget for the board goes over to the town right away. So that line goes down quick. Textbooks is under. Disabling supplies is under. Equipment is under. So that's a basic flyover of your one pager. And then in FFC, we delve in more deeply.
What did you say that the new bus, the transportation services, when you did the new contract, how much is it short versus what was budgeted?
Right now, it's, it's hundreds of thousands higher than what was budgeted.
No, no, yeah.
So, you know, enterprise is a good, we're, you know, right now, we are balancing out probably a $500,000 differential there. And what was budgeted way back and what we, we ended up, we went out to bid. There was one bidder. And that's how it ended. We did some negotiation with them. So it's a little lower than we would have had otherwise, but it's still higher than what we had budgeted.
So you're projecting you got to find a half a million dollars at the end of the year to offset that? Or do you use part of that emergency reserve fund or whatever that thing's called?
Right now, we, we are, we are in a freeze and actually I, I've done exactly that. We, we scooted through all our lines so that we can make up for that by not spending in other lines. So, you know, I'm confident we're, we're going to be okay, but it is going to be a tough year and we, you know, we are in a position now where a lot of our budgets are frozen.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the information.
That's one of the things, obviously in FFC, they go into a lot more detail than this one pager.
You know, I'm sure they do. Absolutely.
Yeah, I tried to be thorough here, but the FFC we can win.
So they, this expands out, but they go into that conversation as far as making trouble, the minuses, a capital plus and all of that. So it starts to get a little cloudy when we roll it all up into a one pager. But there's a lot more that can deal that is provided in this event.
Thank you.
Is, is there going to be any changes to the stipends with the new rule about coaches being able to coach, not have seen them?
And that's going back and forth a bit right now. But, yeah, they probably won't do it free.
Well, I would imagine so.
So yes, the answer is yes, that could affect the stipends, but that has, that's still kind of out there right now. We're still trying to. And there's a lot of issues with that. We could talk about that.
Any question?
Are we still having a substitute shortage?
Well, I mean, that's perpetual. We're doing a pretty good job with covering it, but I'd say the whole state of Connecticut, there's a sub shortage. How many college kids coming back is helping us out a lot? Because a lot of our kids are coming back. They're selling for us because we're begging them.
During break?
During break. A lot of college kids who are able to sub come back and, you know, and they're doing it. I don't know, a bunch of the people are doing it because it helps, helps the districts out across the whole state. But yes, general.
How many permanent subs do we have in the district?
Usually you'll have two to three per school, but we can, usually can't sustain that.
Okay. So it's not a matter of not being able to find.
There's just not a lot of people who want to, want to do it.
Oh, they're, okay.
So we do have, you know, we'll generally have two to three per building. It can fluctuate because people might get tired of being in the permanent sub. Because the, the difference is you have to do it every day. And some people get tired of doing it every day and instead I just want to be a, you know, on call sub again.
And then my other question is, where are we in terms of, you know, the insurance lift that we were hoping was?
Actually, we're trending down.
Great.
Good numbers in that it's trending down. You know, we are in a time of year where that does typically go dip a little bit, but we are lower than we were last year enough to, to, to make it good news. But it's not, you know, we will have a favorable insurance rate this year likely and we're working that out right. And that's another thing we'll talk about and report in FFC and then bring up to the whole floor. It'll be incorporated into the budget I presented to you and it'll be one of your considerations when we finalize your budget.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Will.
On to next. So what I've tried to do now, I was trying to think of a way to make sure the board was informed of any time we had to add a physician after the budget had already passed. We don't normally have to do that a lot. So, you know, we have more than 400 staff and this will fluctuate by a couple of people during the year. One of the reasons we typically would have to do it is when an IEP or a student's special education program requires that staff are brought in or hired. So for instance, if a student comes in who needs a one-to-one nurse as part of their IEP, we have to hire a one-to-one nurse to work with the child during school day, et cetera. So that would be something that I would report to you in what I call within fiscal year physician addition. So these will come to you once in a while. Whenever I have to add something, I'll come to you and say, I had to do this. So that when you're looking at the FTE sheets, it's not a, you know, surprise like, well, how did we go from this budget that got approved? And now we have more than that, you know, what happened? This is how this happens. So. Right now, we needed to bring in point six seven more of FT speech, speech pathologists. We have a program required by the state of Connecticut for kids that are aged three through five, that are just before coming into our preschool and K and just into preschool. And when students in that age group are identified as having exceptionalities or special needs, they can come in and then they, you know, we do a process for that. PBT, there's an IEP created. And then the school system has to adhere to the IEP and these are children that are not actually in our school buildings yet. They're aged three to five. We've had so many more coming out of COVID that needed services for speech and language. We've had to bring in, you know, someone to do additional services for speech and language. So we had a point three three. We had to add a point six seven to that, at that level to, to make it a full one, to be able to handle all the cases that were coming up for speech and language and to, and to be able to be in compliance with the IEP. We can't choose to be out of compliance with IEP. It's like violating a contract. And then a family could say you're in violation of the IEP, in which case we would then probably, you know, at least have to provide even more services. Because in the time that you're violating the contract, you have to go back and fix the damage that was done by not having the resource available. So that's how we got a point six seven addition to it. It's about $25,000 and these happen sometimes. And again, it's an unexpected add, but.
When we create a big addition to.
Or complete the presentation?
No, no, I'd say that, that's, I can stop there.
When, when we create these budget lines, do we have a little contingency in there for anticipated expenses like this?
Well, for instance, we try to anticipate one outplacement that we do not yet have. So we do. But it tends to happen is it can go in both directions. It can be favorable to us and not favorable to us. We do do some planning, yes, but there tends to be fluctuation in FTE by a couple of people every year.
And this 25,000 addition, is that already within that contingency of the budget? Or is this in addition outside of that line?
We've actually gone above what we had planned, you know, and so that's another reason why we're in a freeze. And we had, we had a situation within the last two weeks that increased it by 100,000 more. But I was also. I was able to do some other things that reduced it, you know, so you're going up and down constantly. And you'll, the board will find out more about some of these things as we go through the next couple of weeks. Sometimes when I do residency operations, if I find that there's a person who's attending that shouldn't be in the district, that can change. And that does that.
Thank you, Dr. Will. Moving on, committee and liaison reports. We don't have any committees quite yet, but do you have anything from the PTA?
All right.
All right. Then we will go on. Chairperson's report. I will be brief.
It's your time.
Lisa said as long as I'm under four pages.
Maybe a shotgun.
All right. So Kanichi Omek is an organizational theorist currently studying Japanese business in a post Brexit world. He's recently quoted as saying, growing harder doesn't help if the boat is headed in the wrong direction. The statement really spoke to me this past week in, in two ways. First, it points out the, the difficulty of motion without direction. As we, as we work together these next few meetings to identify our board goals, let's remember the importance of that, which we've been entrusted. And as we're setting these goals, realize that that's setting that direction. The second takeaway is that even with a great goal, requires energy to become successful. So may each of us in our own unique way commit to providing that momentum. Along these lines, I recently sat with Katie from the county council, the chairman of the county council for chair power last week. While we only had two visitors, we spoke with them for about an hour and a half. I anticipate this number will grow. I sincerely hope it will grow as we get more of our residents taking advantage of the ability to communicate with their board. And for us to do that work that they've, they've asked us to. Thank you. All right, Dr. Will. Board action L1.
All right. Exciting. It's the obsolete and surplus equipment, basically in short.
You've even got a picture.
I have a picture. These are causing kids to get hurt. They're, they're not well designed. They're a little old and when the kids are sitting on them, they're falling and getting hurt. So they're being, they're not being utilized and we are going to surplus them out to the town and the town may be able to melt them down for steel or something like that.
Is it something you always have, you have to do this?
Yes. You have, under policy, we have to do this whenever there is a item that is policy thirty, forty. We can't just throw it in a dumpster. We have to surplus it. And so we head it to town and then they can decide what they want to do.
And just to add to that, even better is we have to approve giving this to the town.
Right. So there's a proposed motion here. I'll usually kind of line it up. And then one of you would make the motion to declare the below items as obsolete and turn them over to the town and the board, the board of that.
This is just a point I, I just wondered.
Well, there's a couple of them.
Eighteen stools.
So let's go ahead, Dr. Will, finish.
That's it for your consideration. Proposed motion is there if you want it.
I would motion. Have motion.
Yes.
Second it. All right. Discussion. Anybody that particularly does not want to get rid of the chairs or particularly passionate about it. You are. Got to use for the rec center.
Right?
So let's go on to a roll call vote then. Eddie? Jen?
Hi.
And all right, Bill?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. And Rudy?
Hi.
All right. unanimous is approved. Right. That brings us to public participation. Again, for those that are remote, please raise your hand. You will be recognized. Limits to two minutes. And comments must be limited to items on this agenda. Limits to two minutes and comments must be limited to items on this agenda. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Points of information. Anybody like to to speak?
I'll say I heard you, sorry. I'll say I heard you mention a Japanese philosopher and I thought we were in for a long one, so props to you on your. Way forward and I am looking forward to this term in genuine form, so uh thanks for your input.
I'm gonna be honest, last night it was much, much. At some point, my wife said, nobody wants to hear this. Anybody else?
Uh like, you know, I I'm appreciative for leadership to put goals on first. I know it's just Joan, it took us several months to get Joan. I think it's very important that we really. Do our work behind the scenes to put it in that, but she was really happy to see how populated this road she was. Um that was very encouraging, um because it is, there's a lot of different faces, a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different ideas and important ideas. Um so it's really, it's a good idea and it's an important idea for us to get involved. And go onto his doodle polls and his Google docs and his and put all those in so that we can have a good group of conversation here in the classroom. Um because it did make it very difficult to start when we didn't have those basic core fundamentals of what we were trying to. Charge in this one. Um so I'm really appreciative of that, that we're able to get that on there and I'm. Hopefully, we can keep the eye on the prize and get that um lined up. And, you know, I'm really excited that we had to acknowledge some of our teachers and our teacher and our professional today. Uh that was really fantastic, but thank you for doing that.
That's why I just want to make sure our homework is to go through the polls over the next week.
So it'll be, I'll send out a communication tomorrow that will help you with, it'll be very clear and you're you're clicking a link. They'll be up there and you'll rank, you'll have the ability to just rank them and then.
You will get to know well or three, Dr. Will.
Technically, this is a Google poll. Doodle poll is another thing. We have not the pleasure of the doodle poll. This is a Google poll. You may never face it.
All right, uh anybody else? All right, then we will close. Points of information, we have no future uh going on. All right, so new business. And then thank you all for your, thank you all for your communication on the uh on the committees. Both in the emails and then we've had some conversations with different people as far as your passion. What you see here, Dr. Will, if you can go back up to the top. Yep, thank you. Uh what you see here are the appointments uh for policy, Dan Philbin will chair, thank you. Uh with Jaden and and the other members there. Negotiations, uh Jen with Bill, Rini and Katie. Yeah, thank you all. FFC, Dan, Chair. With Dana, Katie and Rini participating. Communications, Brian is Chair with Jen and Dana participating there. Curriculum Committee, Bill is the Chair, Jennifer, Brian and Jaden there. Uh a couple of things, one, committee chairs, uh if you'll work with Jen Colombo, she'll help you schedule those, schedule your meetings. There are meetings that are currently posted on there, but if you need to adjust it and then. The meeting times that are on there are not carved in stone. They were put in place to meet, you know, the the schedules of the people involved. Example, I know policy last year was at three o'clock, is that work with breaks and meetings that that the group had at certain times of. Make it your, make it what you need to be. Uh Jen is also absolutely amazing at making sure that your agendas. Uh get turned in in time so she can post it and the minutes are put in there. So she will, she'll be a whole lot of help to you as you as you work through this process. Uh the one thing that that we're going to find out, you know, the leadership has had some conversations about how we take advantage of this meeting. You know, we have a whole lot of work we want to do, but I've heard it whispered that we don't want eleven o'clock and twelve o'clock meetings. So how do we do more with less is really what we're looking at. And one of the things that I want to emphasize is really taking advantage of the power of subsidies. And so, for example, you know, some of these conversations about the uh. The the capital budget, uh some of these going into the details on the one pagers. Uh there's some policy stuff coming out from the states, uh from the state, rather than having the complete discussion here. We'll kick it to the committees, let the committees do the hard labor there and then bring the reports back for the decisions that need to be done. So we'll, you'll start seeing a whole lot of emails as something comes in and kicking it over to communications and saying, hey, can you guys work on this? Now, that doesn't say it has to be in your next meeting. You'll fit that into your agenda as you see fit and just work it back. But but we will be working that and using the committees a lot more than we ever did before.
And just keeping in mind, when you're kicking the communications around, the communication going in, can we talk about this? Sending it to someone for planning, one directional works, but you 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 can't go back and forth with multiple people. It ends up.
Really gonna go into that in the uh in the next video on the presentation that gets into that. Uh that's why you'll see that blurb on some emails saying, please do not reply all of that, that'll be. Questions?
I just wanted to thank Tony for working with us on the committees. You definitely did as promised and you were open to. Communication and the things that we felt passionate about and um, you know, where we felt our experience with that. So thank you very much for that.
Right, anything else? We're gonna have to talk about it an awful lot if we're going to motion this statement.
I did way too many of those in the past. I'm good at doing that.
Ready to vote. Okay, no. And that being said then, I am open to a motion for adjournment. Motion for adjournment. Katie? Dan? Bill? Dan? Brian? Jane? Rini? All right, everybody, thank you again. I'm looking for this.